Everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Bardas said he had a work commitment this evening. Commissioner Staff?
Here.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame is sick, so she will not be here this evening. Commissioner Woods?
Here.
And Chair Kempner?
Here.
Do you have a form?
Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion to excuse the absences?
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Bardas and Commissioner Hamame.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda for January 28th?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of December 17th, 2024. Any changes or motions?
Motion to approve meeting minutes of December 17th, 2024?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Communications.
There's just a couple mail pieces that you all have this evening, the latest issue of Michigan Planner, and then some other correspondence from the Michigan Association of Planning.
Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is the time where citizens can come up and comment on items not on the agenda. There will be time to comment on agenda items when we talk about those. I don't see anybody here. Moving on. Old business, zoning ordinance. Kristin, Megan, who's taking us?
Probably Megan.
All right.
So, thank you again for your patience as we're coming to the end of this process. Based on the public hearing and your comments on November 26th, we updated the zoning ordinance. We also had some comments from staff. So, attached to the memo that I sent you that was in your packet, there was a number, a long table, of all the changes. There, and then staff has gone over that and sent us some typos. And then also, just like in Table 1107B, to remove all of their zoning districts. So, we can make those, that's not a problem. One mistake that we accidentally made was we removed vocational schools from the parking table per staff's comment. When that happened, we accidentally removed...
We removed booty school.
We moved booty school, sorry, since that's considered a vocational school. But when we removed that, we accidentally removed colleges, universities, vocational, and other institutions of higher learning. So, that needs to go back in. That wasn't the... So, with those, I think these are all really minor things. It's perfect. We can do these, it's no problem. There wasn't anything substantive after that unless during your review, you looked at it and felt that either some of your comments weren't shown in the draft that's before you, or that you still have some substantive questions or changes. Otherwise, your next action would be make a recommendation to city council. And one other thing that I might note, I forgot to include in the packets the spreadsheet that you all requested detailing the setbacks. I just emailed that out to you. So, if you have any questions or anything, you can let me know.
Thank you. Does anybody have comments, questions? You have to think I do, so I can get started.
Please do.
Let's see, page 41. It's the rear yard, front yard, side yard thing. We put a better picture in there. I still don't know what that little inset, whether that is a side yard or a rear yard.
You're talking between that little space between a bump out?
Yeah.
It's just part of, it's not the rear yard because the rear yard starts at the hidden...
I would agree, but the text tells me that it's still Nowheres land.
Are we on page 232, 2-32?
I'm sorry. Yes, 2-32.
Yeah, page 41 on the PDF.
So, I think that that shows the, you're saying the text doesn't match the picture because the picture would show the little, the space next to the bump out is part of the side yard.
Right. So, the text still says it's like the...
So, the side yard says a yard extending from the front to the rear yard, the width of the minimum horizontal distance between the side lot line and the nearest point of the building. So, it's really the nearest part of the building, which is the problem because in the text, then that doesn't...
That would lead, yeah, I mean, I guess that would lead me to still believe that that's kind of Nowheres land, Nowhere land, that isn't an anything.
But the diagram is what you want.
The diagram tells me that it's a side yard. So, I was like, yay! And then I looked at the text and I was like, oh, but they feel like they're conflicting.
So, let's say, rather, and then have it say the point of the main building nearest, rear yard, to either, neither to, nearest to, because you're going to take it from the rear and the front, nearest to the rear yard and/or the front yard.
Yes.
The rear yard lot line and the front yard lot line. Does that make sense? Let me write it down, I'll repeat.
Okay.
So, the definition of yard, commaside, would be a side yard extending from the front yard to the rear yard, the width of which is the minimum required horizontal distance between the side lot line and the point of the main building nearest either the front lot line or the rear lot line.
Okay. And then on page 82...
Which, I'm working the Word document, could you also give me the...
Oh, yes, I can totally... 5-25. It's my corner lot issue thing again.
Okay.
So, I even tried to like diagram it out. I guess I don't understand what the point of E2 is. Like, why we are dictating the external side, which is just going to be towards the street? Why are we, why is that not anything but 10? I don't know what's problem we're trying to solve with that.
So, this is what's currently in the ordinance. We've been round and round on this about whether to simplify it or not. What came back was that, I think, what, the reason that the text that you have in the current ordinance is there is that it was felt that you would be creating some non-conformities. And we really don't know how many of those are. So, rather to keep it as it is.
That's really the reason we would be creating non-conformities, but we can't say how many additional ZBA cases that would result in if people were to add on, or et cetera, et cetera.
I... So, but I guess my, my question is, so it... So, you have your rear yard that abuts a side yard, right? So, the exterior side yard is just the side to the street, correct?
Yeah.
So, why are we making that have to be big?
Because otherwise, that's how it has been. So, otherwise, we'd be creating...
I mean, it wouldn't be a non-conformity if it was smaller, right? If you said, this is always 10. That's not really a non-conformity, they could build out.
So, you're suggesting to get rid of 2?
Yeah, I don't know what it's, what the problem is, is that it's solving. Like, I don't know what regulation we're trying to fix with this because it's just towards the street.
So, the theory behind that is that in that case, when the, when a rear yard abuts a side yard, the exterior side yard setback is really acting also as a front yard setback because the other, the house that's next door to it, they have a front yard, right?
Right.
That's where the exterior side yard is. So, what you're doing is that you're preserving the street wall of the structures down the street. So, everything lines up with those houses. Because...
Otherwise, you could have 25, 25, 25, 10, 25, 25, 25.
Well, yeah, 10, you cross the street, 25, 25. So, you're going to have this portion that juts out.
Ah, okay.
And it's typical, what most ordinances read, isn't it?
It's typical, and most older cities and villages, that they would have required a different exterior side yard. In a more suburbanized area, typically, they don't even allow that 10 feet. It's all 20, it's all, all the front yard and the exterior side yards are the same.
Are they allowed, they're allowed to have a fence there?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can have a fence, it's just the building.
I feel like your explanation made it make more sense. I was also having trouble visualizing before you said that.
Yeah.
Why?
It's to preserve that street wall of the 25-foot yards.
But that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, I, yes, that makes more sense than I've ever understood this to make. And it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but I also feel like most of those have a fence anyways. So, let them build closer to the street?
Well, it wouldn't be about the fence, it would be about obstructing that view, right? You come out of your front door and you look, depending on where the house is, right or left, you're looking at the rear side of the house that's jutting out towards the street instead of having that same distance to the street, all along the street, for those houses facing the street, and then the corner lot that faces the other street. You know what I'm saying? So, it's like, it's a right, it's a right angle, if you will.
Right. Yeah, okay. It makes sense to me. Which is good. Which is good. And then I think the only other thing I had, which might already be there in the typo, is 7-15. Between D and F, it says D1 instead of E.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I just happened to be looking through it and I was like, oh!
It is a word to Adobe, like formatting error, it happened a number of times.
Okay. All right, those are my only issues. I guess there's only one issue. Anyone else?
I think it's just one of those things where we probably, I mean, you try to plan as much as you can, but you can't foresee everything. So, some of it is just going to be, you know, we'll see once it's in effect. But y'all have done incredible work getting it to this point, so I thank you for that.
Agreed.
We had a lot of help from each of you. They worked hard.
I think you did a really good job taking the comments and everything that we had last time and incorporating them into the document. And it was really cool to have the links now that I could click on and go to.
We've learned a lot about linking.
Generally, I'm, I think we've beat it up enough that I'm good with it.
All right, well, unless somebody has something else compelling to say, then I think we need a motion to recommend approval?
And if you could recommend approval of the items listed on the agenda. There's like a couple different sections listed.
Oh, yeah.
Gotcha. So, recommend approval, then read the paragraph.
All right. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the draft zoning ordinance with the, do I need to reference the changes that you referenced earlier, vocational, and stuff like that? Or can I just read the... Okay. All right, perfect. Motion to recommend approval of the draft zoning ordinance. And to repeal, Chapter 94 signs. Repeal and replace, Chapter 138. Zoning and repeal and replace the City of Berkeley zoning map in order to move sign regulations to the zoning ordinance. Match the recommendations of the master plan and modernize sign and zoning regulations.
Support.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
And Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yay!
In real life.
Yeah, and yes, usable.
The next time we see it, will, well, how, what's, so it goes to city council?
Twice.
For two, yeah, two readings?
And that will be effective 30 days after the second reading.
Okay.
So, if everything goes according to plan, probably the earliest it's effective is mid-April.
Great.
But thank you for all your work on this.
It's exciting.
Very exciting.
Thank you for all the work you guys have done on it.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, oh, I guess this is part, kind of part of it, but not really. Subdivision ordinance discussion.
So, I will let Megan go through this too. It's kind of a companion piece, it came up as we were doing this. It will be in the city code, so we're bringing it to you to take a look at, but you don't need to make any motions on it this evening.
So, at present, the City of Berkeley does not have a subdivisions ordinance, which probably makes sense because the only way you would be using a subdivisions ordinance is if you annexed land and was having a subdivision come in, or if a particularly large piece of property came up for redevelopment and somebody wanted to subdivide it for either a commercial development or residential development. I'm sure all of you may have had like one property pop into your mind about that, but it would be really rare. Also, the design regulations of your subdivisions ordinance would apply to any site condominium. And that is how folks tend to divide land now. Because you can divide it by a site condo, which the process is very easy by state law. Whereas typically, up until the 1990s, the land was what quote-unquote "platted", and if you read through all that subdivisions ordinance, you saw that whole, that the whole process that needs to happen, and it's onerous. So, it would be rare that you would get a plat. It would be rare that you would have a need for subdivisions ordinance, but you should have one just in case it comes up. So, we listed in the memo that we gave you what the function of each of the divisions are. And I would say the one that really you should look at and be concerned at is that division for the design standards for subdivision planning. And that lays out for streets, alleys, pedestrian facilities, utilities, easements, blocks, and land use. And it also lays out those dimensional requirements. When there were dimensional requirements such as the width of a block or the perimeter of a block, what we used were measurements that we took from aerial photography of your actual, of what's going on in your city. So, we use minimums and maximums of the built environment already. We didn't use a suburban model or pull a number out of a hat. So, that's that, and happy to answer any questions. Chapter 110, which does land divisions and combinations, that had kind of been your default. It had said also subdivisions, but really, that's not what that law does. So, it's proposed to change the title to division and combination of lands. And then you had a redline copy which shows you the edits proposed, and most of those were actually documenting what the city does because you do have splits and combinations. Kristin, would you say like 5 or 10 a year, something like that?
Oh, more than that.
Really?
Between commercial and residential. Yeah, I would say maybe like 50.
Really?
Yeah, sometimes it's just little adjustments here or there.
Oh.
But yeah.
So, then, wanted it to document what the city actually does and not have things like it has to go to the city manager when, where they're designee and whatnot, when actually by state law, that doesn't need to happen. And that's not something that the city does, you know, wants to do anyway, it's just an extra step. So, these are more, and again, these are general ordinances that city council would approve after two readings. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but really, these are more getting all of your development toolbox into shape.
So, while we don't have to recommend approval, does city council have to approve them? Okay.
Because it's part of the city code, not the zoning ordinance.
Gotcha. Thoughts, questions, comments? All right, I suppose thank you for letting us know and letting us have... Well, look, discussion time. All right, moving on. PSP 0125, 27333 to 27387, Woodward Avenue. Would you like to, Kristin, do you want to give us a...
Yes, I'm just switching gears.
Sure.
Okay, so this, both of the site plans that are before you this evening are for previously approved plans that came before most of you. I think the other one might be a little bit older. But this one was here just recently, about a year ago. And in the course of developing their construction plans, they determined that they needed to make a few changes. And those changes were significant enough that it needed to come back to you. So, they are detailed in my memo. Some of them are fairly minor, some changes in ramps and the location of stairs and things like that. But the ones that I do want to specifically point out is the carryout food service area has been removed. So, if you'll recall, there was a food service area near the front of the building where the public could come in and do like grab something quick. There's some space for them to potentially sit there and eat if they wanted, or to take it to go. That, that use in the building has been removed. That area of the building is now a free space for only users of the building. So, that had reduced their parking requirements because of the removal. That was the highest parking user space. And then also, I want to point out that they did add 507 square feet by extending the reception, the single-story reception area. So, that additional space has been added. But even with that space, the parking requirements are still lower than they were previously because of the heavy parking requirement for restaurant use. The other major change that I think is worth noting is that previously, if you'll recall, they had the roof deck and it kind of extended with this walkway to the other side of the building. It now is just in the main portion of the building, and the portion to the north has been removed. The applicant is here, they have material building samples to show you to coincide with the facade updates that they're talking about and are happy to go over anything. They are looking for approval from you this evening on the revised site plan changes. Staff didn't see any issue with it and is recommending approval. You would in an approval motion, should you choose to do that. Need to mention again that the landscaping meets the requirements of Section 13037, and also that the site plan itself meets the requirements of Section 138679. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and then the applicant's here as well.
Perfect. Does anybody have any questions for staff? The applicant like to come up and talk to us?
Of course, I just wanted to say that we've really enjoyed working with Kristin and Kim. They've been lovely to work with. And the project is complicated, and as we got into the design, there were certain things that we were able to clean up and make the overall design substantially better. It included making these very awkward exit pathways over the existing roof go away by using this very narrow space that had been, I guess, a hockey display thing for one of the Red Wings a long time ago. We were able to utilize that. And we were able to manage certain elevation changes between the front and back of the building in a more elegant way. We were able to remove an exit stair that was rather inelegant in the back. And then there was this one roof that just begged to have a slight expansion of square footage. And so, this was just in the course of really digging into construction documentation that these opportunities arose. And we feel that the overall plan is a much better plan and doesn't impact the city in meaningfully negative ways. So, we're appreciative of that review and recommendation by Kristin.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for the applicant?
How many parking spaces would be reduced?
I think, I think we, we had gotten a, not an exception, but a 10% accommodation under our prior application. But because of the removal of one of the more intense uses, we then came within the ordinance's requirements. Is that correct, Kristin?
That's correct.
So, that's the change. So, we have the same number of parking spaces, but we have a code less intensive use of the property that changed that.
Specifically went from 47 spaces to 43 required, and we have 43 spaces on site with the biking, bike rack along the lines.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Is there any landscaping changes?
I think that the landscaping was modified a little bit because we have now handicamp ramps in the back, but the footprint is largely the same. I don't think there's a material difference in the way it looks.
No, it's more of a rearrangement of that back area.
Okay.
You said it's, it's four feet higher than what it was previously proposed? I thought I read...
Yes, the building's taller.
The building's a little bit taller.
Still within the allowable height requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, it's three feet, four inches taller.
Okay.
Because it was like an open space on the second floor, but now it's closed, right?
It was like an unoccupied roof of a reception area.
Okay.
That just made sense for us to enclose and have a little bit more...
Yeah, but it's enclosed, right?
So, the footprint didn't change, just we're utilizing what was a rooftop for additional space.
But it's not open to...
No.
So, I think, didn't we have a discussion on that last time?
About it being open and noise possibilities and stuff like that.
But it's all inside now.
Yeah, the openness is on the Woodward side. There's no longer any on the back that would face residential.
No, I guess no change in the materials or...
Same materials.
Okay. Just these updates. Just these updates.
I think I'm all set.
I am too. I'm open to a motion unless, another question?
Yeah, just one question. Because wasn't it something to where I thought we had, so you don't need to do any parking agreements with Einstein or anything like that, right?
That's no longer required, we meet the ordinance requirements.
Based on the?
They meet the ordinance requirements.
Okay. I think that was the only thing we had brought up before.
Yeah, I think there was something about. Yeah, provide a shared parking agreement, but that's no longer necessary. I think I'm all set as well.
All right, then I'm open to a motion.
Motion to approve. What do I go through though?
I think we have to at least say that it's met the landscaping and site plan.
Okay.
And if you just want to say that, I can fill in this.
Yeah, say recommend motion to approve, which includes a finding that the planning commission finds that the plan meets the standards for site plan approval per section 138-679 and that the landscaping as proposed meets the requirements of section 130-37.
Support.
Want to call, roll?
Yes. Commissioner Staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
And Chair Kemp.
Yes.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing it.
We appreciate it, look forward to having something the community's proud of, so.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. And moving on, PSP 0724-2576 Coolidge, Berkeley, BP.
So this is one that is from a couple of years ago now. They came before you, I think, a few times for an extension in the past few years. But it was approved back in April of '22. This is for the existing gas station at the corner of Coolidge and Catalpa. And they've come forward with a couple of different changes. They've reconfigured the parking. So you'll notice most, the parking that's between the building and Coolidge has been reconfigured slightly to a little bit better layout. The facade has changed. That's probably the most material change that you have to look at today. And as part of that, the door that was on the Coolidge facing facade has been removed. And the transparency along that facade has been reduced too. It's a little bit of an unusual building in that it really is oriented to be, have its front facade facing Catalpa. So keep that in mind. But with the changes that they have proposed, that would require the planning commission to waive those requirements for both the front door and to allow the reduced transparency. It's staff recommendation that they try to bring that transparency up a little bit or consider a door there. Honestly, probably just bringing up the transparency makes more sense than including the door. But something that you should keep in mind, the landscaping's been altered. It's been reduced slightly, but not too much. And then you'll see that a storage area has been added near the dumpster. Otherwise, the plan is as it was. There are some changes to the floor plans and things, but obviously you guys don't need to worry about that. We'll get into that at the building permit review. The same requirements apply in that you'd have to find that it meets the site plan standards and that it also meets the landscape requirements, which really just ask for right now that the planning commission find that there's adequate landscaping. And then should you proceed with an approval motion, please mention the reduction in the allowable transparency and the revision that a door is not required on the Coolidge highway frontage. And the applicant is here as well.
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you, Kristen. She's been very patient with us and she's helped us more than anyone I've worked with so far. So I really appreciate it.
Yep. I totally forgot to do this last time. If you could, for the record, just say your name and city of residence for the minutes.
Jason Yaldu, West Bloomfield, Michigan.
Thank you. So would you like to tell us about your revised project?
We're really excited. Some things happened over the years. I was just getting out of back surgery when we came to get approval. And then some stresses and things like that and changes in relationships throughout the project caused us to just slow it down a little bit. And then we asked for those extensions and just took a little longer than we would like, but I think for good reasons. Because the, the image, I think, or the facade itself looks and is more optimal of a design. So I think for the better part and my own health, it's coming together a little better. As for the transparencies and the door entrance things, I have a lot of reasons why. I don't know if you guys are asking for that right now or if you have any questions about it. We can get into it.
I would like to know, yeah.
Yeah, so the door specifically, it seems like it'd be, it was designed a little better for safety. And let me see, I got a lot of notes here. Safety and practicality. So to prioritize safety, we designed the main entrance at, for, on the Catalpa facade, which better, I mean, I'm sorry, designed the main entrance on the Catalpa facade, which better supports safe access for customers and reduces potential conflicts with the traffic coming in from Coolidge. And then some of the more notable things is the design of this building itself. You only get approximately 1,000, 1,200 square feet of retail inside of a building like this. So to add another door there would significantly change the configuration of what you're trying to do there. It would be a significant cost burden and potential reduction in profitability. And to do a project of this size, we got to maximize profitability. So that's one of the bigger parts of it. We tried to do things to make egress better, so we put a double door on the Catalpa side. Like Kristen was saying, the building is long on the Catalpa side. So it kind of traditionally enhances an entrance on that side as well. Pulls the entrance away from the gas pumps a little bit more so that pedestrians that are parking can walk in a little easier too. So there's the layout. So if we put a door on the Catalpa side, it would go right through that kitchen. And we would have to somehow reconfigure the inside to even accommodate that or reduce retail space.
So to the right, that's Coolidge? I'm looking at this.
The kitchen side, yeah, you're right.
This is Coolidge right here.
Yep.
Okay, and then the proposed door is right on Catalpa, right there?
Okay. So right now we have a door on Catalpa already and a door on Coolidge. So we'd be closing the door on Coolidge and extending the Catalpa door to a double door.
And then is that where the decrease in transparency figures in? Because there wouldn't be a door.
There's that, but they've also decreased the visual glass on that side as well. And it's really all related to this internal layout.
So I guess on the east side of the building, there's, there's no windows?
There are some.
No, on the east side, there's, it's just.
Brick.
Just brick right now, isn't it? Yeah.
Or are you west side of the building?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find the proposed elevations.
I think it might be the last.
Yeah, I think it's further down.
There it is.
So there's one window, so this would be the kitchen area here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on the west. And then the east is brick.
Which it currently is.
Yeah.
And there's no transparency requirement.
And that's the alley between the high school and us. There's not much visible. We've even thought about potentially working with the city or with the school to see if they'd want to put a mural on there. Obviously, you guys have to approve it, but it's not visible to most of the public though.
But there was also, there was also on the previous one, there was more windows on the north side. Is there a reason why you took those out? Because that looks like that is not impacted by?
When we sat down with the architect, he advised us to try to remove those windows because that whole wall, that layout is all, it's going to be vending. So it would be beverages, beverage machines. So you're going to have machines in the back of those windows collecting dust with, you know, wiring coming out of them. So visually, it would probably degrade the integrity of the image.
Can you flip to the floor plan? Is that what those, the box that's along the north facing wall? That's where the vending machine, that's where you had the windows now. But there was a third window panel. The one on the, like, working from the left to the right, there was, yeah, there was a panel there, a panel there, and that third panel was larger. So I understand the vending machines there, I understand why that third panel wasn't larger. But why did you take out the, that first panel, window panel?
I think we just moved them over and.
It's the cooler. Sorry to jump in, but it's for the cooler, the storage area right there.
So going in there, that's just our storage area and coolers along that way. We could potentially put those higher windows back in if that's what you guys would like to see.
Put them higher?
Yeah, I'm definitely not hung up on the, on the Coolidge door, but I would like to see the transparency raised.
No, I think the way they lined them up was to line up with the existing windows now. So that it's all the straight.
Right.
It just looks.
Just along the Coolidge elevation.
Gotcha.
But if the commission thought that they would be willing to grant a waiver for the Coolidge elevation transparency requirements in exchange for the applicant potentially adding some transparency to the north elevation.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like that's reasonable. It's on a corner.
It is a screwy kind of.
It can be prominently visual from that Catalpa side. If we could increase transparency on that side, I'm okay with no door on the Coolidge side. I'm okay with no more windows on the Coolidge side. But it's starting to feel very boxy, you know, like, because this is even less transparency than currently, right?
Uh, well, those are garages on that side. We're closing the garage, so we would no longer have an auto facility there. So those are just big garage doors with clear windows right now, if you go to the original design. But it's so different because obviously you're changing really the usage of the building.
Yeah.
So.
I was curious if public safety had any input on only one door being on the Catalpa side?
Something that's reviewed as part of the building code requirements?
Okay.
Public safety wouldn't comment on that and wouldn't actually become part of the review at this point.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks.
Technically, I was looking at the ADA parking and I think technically that would have to be right next to the door too, but that's probably a little bit.
And that'd be part of the building plan too? I mean, they could shift that if they needed to shift.
Yeah, they're adding the ADA ramps to be able to get to the door as well there. So, yep.
Yeah, just, I think technically the ADA has to be the spot, the closest to the door though, if you read through the federal rule. But that's.
Yeah, we can talk to the architect about that and figure that out, you know.
Well, beans.
So I'm okay, and I'm okay with the landscaping, like, it is what it is. It's on a corner. But I would love to see some way of working in some more transparency, even if that's on the Catalpa side, I can live with that.
Can those be widened? Can they be?
Because they're slimmer profile too. Could the windows be, like, height wise, could they be widened?
So I think the, hello, I'm Chris, by the way. I'm the contractor. The architect had lined up the two windows on the left to be at the height of the existing windows that are there to match the door, just so it all.
Streamline it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, just to get that modern, you know, just to keep the modern look going.
So I guess what would you guys like to see? We can try to figure out.
Maybe add a third window to the left, so it's three windows instead of two, the same height?
I think personally, for me, I think a third set of windows would be ideal next to those two and that they would be bigger windows.
I mean, you could even line the bottom of the window maybe up with the top of that other, right? So it's offset higher, right? Gives it some balance. But I would, yeah, same, I would like, yeah.
And I would totally support, you know, providing a waiver on the west for the door for that, for the more windows.
We'd also consider the waiver for the transparency requirement.
Right, yeah, yeah. If we could just get a little bit more. What's like, I guess about the height of those windows? It'd be like seven foot, six to seven foot bottom.
So the, the larger windows are 40 by 60, I believe. So those smaller ones, let's say maybe 30 inches.
Yeah, off the ground.
Thirty, like three or four feet, three feet maybe? Oh, from the ground, I'm sorry.
Yeah, from the ground.
No, because that's.
That's four feet.
That's the height of the.
The height of the door, yeah.
It's touching the top of the transom, so it's pretty high.
Probably like seven foot up, eight to ten feet.
No, well.
Yeah, it's almost eight, it's almost 10, the top of it's about 10 feet.
That door is eight feet.
Is that to try and get over?
Vending machines or?
Yeah, the vending, so you're not looking at it?
And then it's at the top of the transom, so I think it's just under eight feet at the top of it.
At the very top of the window you're seeing.
At the top of it, yeah.
It might not have.
So probably six to eight feet, six to the bottom, eight to the top.
Is that so you're not looking in at the vending? You have it above the vending?
We have it just above the vending. So anything, you go a little lower, you start seeing some type of.
That makes sense to me. I mean, I think you don't want to put windows and have transparency and then be looking straight at.
I was talking to them about it and I'm like, can you just black them out then? And they're like, well, what's the point then? It's gonna, it's just not making any sense at that point.
We wouldn't want to see that.
Yeah, it changes the whole aesthetic of the building. The other thing we were, we had mentioned was, due to it being a gas station, this isn't your traditional downtown district type building right up against the sidewalk. So we're pushed back a little bit. We have canopies, we have pumps, we have things like that that are going to be kind of what you first see as well. So understanding it's, you know, I would assume you guys are trying to get a downtown feel approach of the buildings lining up, looking at it. The setback kind of changes that a little bit as well, I think. But I'm making assumptions too because I don't work on a board, so.
Can you put a third window in there? Is that?
I don't think it would be, well, we'd have to see where the header goes and if that affects the support of it or not, but.
Because there's a, because that last one, there's, there's a main beam that goes down and then there's a header that carries the weight. So that's the only problem is to try to line it up, but we can work on something for that.
Definitely, an architect, unfortunately, he couldn't make it today. But definitely architect question, and we can get your response probably tomorrow even.
Yeah, because I know we're working with like an old, it's an older prefab building too, so.
We would have, potentially have to change how they align too, if that header does get in the way or change the sizing of them a little bit. If it's a big deal, then we'll let you know, I guess. You know, it's, I think it's something we can definitely take back though.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see options of how you would increase transparency, whether that's a third window, whether that's some other type of treatment.
Yep.
And just go from there, even if it's inside post, just have this on.
Do, I'm just curious if it's more difficult for like adding a window or something? Because, yeah, it's like really just plain there at the end. Is there anything on the outside that could be done to maybe break it up or at least make it more aesthetically pleasing? Because it is a gas station, that's in like their storage area, right? So it's not, not like you're looking in to be like, oh, cool, their storage area.
What's the, is that exterior, is that the white?
Yeah, cement panel.
Want to show all of these?
Yeah, so excuse this because it fell and I had to repaint it like a couple hours ago. It looked a lot better yesterday, the wind took the whole thing. And then for the wood panels around the parapet, I do have, if you guys want to see what it is, composite wood panels if you want to see them.
Yeah, you can do some show and tell. Thanks.
Yeah, I like the materials.
Materials are good.
Yeah.
And then I will have, so the separation in between is a black aluminum that everything would sit inside of, so it would be a nice and clean look.
Okay. I guess, and I don't know what options it could be, it's just, that's where I'm seeing just on that top, the Catalpa side, it's the end of the.
It's the end of the the, that'd be the east side of the building, just really.
Let's add a third there, same size. Try and make it symmetric, and then we'll go from there. If there's major issues with it, then I'll talk to you, Kristen, and we'll see what has to happen, but I I don't, I don't wanna say for sh- you know, I don't know enough about load bearing and things like that to know if it it all comes together well, but I don't see why not. We'll see.
Yeah, I I think a third window is would be nice. I just, I personally, I just feel like they should be bigger. I don't know. I I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, they feel like they should be taller.
Like even taller from the current location? Not like going down, but like.
Yeah, going up, like.
I see what you mean. It breaks up with like the line.
Yeah, I get the design.
But maybe make those windows taller, right?
Yeah.
Those are existing windows we're keeping.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, I I don't know if, uh, is it something, I guess, architecturally, I I.
I think that was more design related and functionality related, you know, with your convenience and whatever the coolers we have up front, so you know, we couldn't go down too much, cause then you would see, you know, again, like you were saying, the cables and dust and everything, so that was like the height where at least it was good enough where we we wouldn't take away from our sales space, but also you wouldn't see anything from, you know, the street either, so a clean look. We can maybe try to go up a little higher, just, we have to just see how the, these, we still have like the whole metal truss system up there too, so there's only a certain amount that we're we're able to go, but if we can extend it a little bit higher, we can definitely do that, or even a third window. Um, uh, you know, to match the panel, I think would also look good. I know that that section was um an addition, so that's why there was a load bearing right there, so.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to do it as, uh, you know, with what we have. But maybe we can go a little higher, maybe a foot higher each or something. I don't know how much, but when we get into it, we will know more.
It's like those top ones on the garage then essentially.
I feel like, yeah, something, I mean, a foot, I feel like it would make a big visual impact, even though it sounds small.
Well, no, and they're long windows too, and they're roughly, I think, almost ten feet.
Yeah, it would be a sizable difference, I feel like.
So you're getting a good amount, a good amount.
Ten foot by here, four feet.
Yeah.
Three and a half feet probably. So they're not small, maybe the the view, you know, because we're looking at it as a
Yeah.
You know, on a smaller.
Cause each one of those panels is a a four by ten.
But we, I mean, we can try, it's just a matter of, you know, the architects, they do this, so he's gonna tell me, no, dude, don't. Or he's gonna say, yeah, no problem. You know, they're gonna try and make it, especially, there's been several times, like, do this, do it. They're like, no way. Uh-uh, that will look horrible. So they're they're pretty good at what they do, I think, for the most part. It doesn't cost much more to go a foot higher or do that. So for me, being the businessman, paying the dollars, I'm not complaining about it. So just depending on the architect, what he he has to say.
Exactly, it's structural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah.
So I guess how do we motion?
I was just gonna say, Kristen, do you have an idea of how we would motion this? Like, I don't want them to have to like redraw plans and recome back to us.
If they can make the changes that you.
Right, with some reasonable flexibility of it.
So I would say you could say that the applicant increased the transparency on the north elevation by either adding a third window if it doesn't conflict with existing structural features and or increasing the size of the existing windows. And then if they can't add the third window and they can't increase the size, they're back here. And then if they can only bump up those windows by six inches or something, it would be my call to say, I don't think that's the intent of a planning commission wanted, and they'd be back here.
Okay.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with this?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, somebody repeat that in a motion.
Needs a little bit more.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just curious, though, like, in the extent it it's not structurally able to, like, what would they be able to do? Just based on.
Probably have to come back here, tell us it's not structurally capable of doing, and then we would have to choose to waive the whole thing.
Okay.
If you were comfortable with that, or you could go back to the west elevation and talk about things on that side.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I thought you were gonna do it. I thought, I thought he was like, I'm gonna do it.
What?
I thought you were gonna make the motion.
Oh, make the motion, oh.
I wrote it down, if you wanna read it.
I can't read that shit in scratch.
Fair enough. All right, bye. I guess I'll make a motion um to recommend approval subject to
To approve.
Uh, recommend to approve, subject to conditions?
So you'd be making a motion to approve um including findings that the planning commission's granting a waiver of the transparency requirements and the requirement for a door on the west facade with the condition that the applicant increase the transparency on the north elevation by either adding a third window and or increasing the size of the existing windows. Um, I don't know my direction's out, the existing windows on the largest part of the building or something.
North, the north elevation.
Those two windows.
Should've let Commissioner Arnson do this. All right, I'm making a motion to approve um granting a waiver for the transparency on the north elevation um subject to the conditions.
West elevation.
Best elevation.
Oh, the west. Well, I was gonna, I was gonna start with the north and then do the door.
Well, the windows are the the west side though, too, right?
Yeah.
The transparency is the west side.
Transparency rules are, that's really for the west side.
On the west elevation, um by allowing the removal of the door, existing door, and allowing the transparency waiver for the windows in the west elevation, uh with the condition that the applicant either add a third window on the north elevation on the largest bare wall.
Or increase window sizes.
Or increase the uh window height of um the windows on the largest wall of the north elevation. Um, and we also make a finding that the uh the landscaping meets the standards of section one thirty dash thirty-seven and that the site plan standards have been met.
Did we get that all for you?
Yeah, that's good.
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Chair Camperner?
Yes.
And may I add, what an excellent motion.
Hey, I was gonna support it, but.
Thank you, guys.
So much. Thank you so much.
All right, Planning Commission bylaws and rules of procedure.
So this is your annual look at your rules and bylaws. I didn't see anything that needed to change, but if anyone has, please let me know.
I'll make my annual complaint that we have to excuse absences.
That has been passed on several times.
I'm just gonna keep doing it, sorry.
Get it on the record.
I agree.
But besides that, I, there's nothing that stuck up to me.
So why can't we remove that from the?
It's just, the council has a vote on it.
Cause counsel wants us to yell shame at whoever is.
I I like, I, to me, I'm like, I I don't know what the per- like, I think the purpose was, so if somebody's abusing it, but we're like, that's not my job to call out that, right? That's their job. Maybe Kristen's job, but it's not our job. It's not even our job to know sometimes while they're gone, right?
In the past, before everyone was sitting here, well, maybe you were here, Lisa, but with the CBA and Planning Commission, we had some times where people would be like a no-call, no-show. Like, we don't even know they're not coming. They just don't show up, and it creates issues if several people do that, and then we have applicants here and there's no warrant.
I, yeah, I I I get that. I just, you know, I don't need to know if a commissioner has a work commitment or is sick, just as long as they're saying, I can't be here tonight. Like, if you know ahead, I mean, bare minimum, you know?
And now you have so many responsible commissioners that.
For sure.
They would never do that.
All right, so does anybody else have any commentary, questions, thoughts on the bylaws?
Nope, they look fine to me. Although it would be nice if it was five or six hours of continuing education, cause I always get the five, and I'm like, I should probably get the sixth one, right?
Five is okay.
I'm an overachiever.
Scoreboard somewhere, cause I don't remember. I don't know how many.
I sent an email about about the.
Okay, all you, all mine said was you were woefully behind.
Yeah, she shamed us. She shamed us. She shamed us privately, though. But now we publicly shamed ourselves.
If you want me to send you your scoreboard again, I can.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Does anyone else want their sent again?
No, I should have mine still.
All right, uh liaison reports. Anybody got one?
Yeah, I did not come here, but I watched it on television last month's or earlier uh this month's CBA meeting. The only thing that they had on was they had a sign um for a s- uh new salon on Twelve Mile. They were asking a variance for the the sign in the rear um behind the, like, where the parking lot is. It's on north side of Twelve. So that parking lot back there, they wanted a little bit larger sign that was then allowed, and it was denied, so.
All right.
It seemed to be a a big deal for them.
Anyone else?
I was out of town for the council meeting, unfortunately.
So for DDA, we're really just trying to deal with the uh the soon to be leaving of Mike McGinnis. I believe yesterday morning, did they finalize the interim?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and yeah, that's pretty much all that's going on. I'm very sad.
Yeah.
Um, and then uh Councilman Burt Patterson was going to try and be here today, but he had some students that needed him more than we did, so um, there was an audit presentation last night. It's on video. Watch it, it's interesting. Um, that's all I got.
Their strategic.
Oh, right, yeah.
Framework, that's what they were calling it last night. So we'll try to come up with some tasks. The biggest task of the Planning Commission as part of that was the zoning ordinance, so we've kind of already checked that off, but we're still gonna listen.
Overachievers.
Cause it's it's very fulfilling to strike it out, right?
And don't we, as part of RRC, have to identify some sites um for, like, right aid? Um, and and figure out how to like sell people to what the vision that we want?
Yes.
I'm paraphrasing.
Our biggest RRC thing was the zoning ordinance, so that's done, but there's still three things left. There's some minor things, but three I'm not gonna call them major. I'll call them like medium level things that we have to get done. Um, one is a marketing plan, one is in incentives policy, and the other one is an economic development strategy. And that involves identification of priority sites. I think it's up to three. Um, and then we get to to showcase them in one of these uh documents, and then that once we get our RRC approval, they will showcase them as well. The MEDC will as part of their efforts. And it also opens up some additional technical assistance funding to us. Um, so yes, that is part of that. Those documents will not come to you guys. But they would be available online, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they don't uh necessarily all need the approval of council either, but they'll be shared with them in some form.
Okay. All right, did you have any additional staff comments for us?
No, I have nothing additional.
Nice.
Thank you again for your work on the zoning ordinance. I'm so excited it's moving on.
Right. Do you anticipate we'll have a meeting next month?
I have nothing that is ready for you next month at this point, so.
When is the deadline for, is it thirty days?
It's January twenty-fourth was the deadline for submitting for the February meeting.
Yeah.
But to be completely honest, I've been a little bit flexible. If people um don't need public notice requirements, that's really what the deadline is for. So for example, like the Jewish Community Center technically missed the deadline for this meeting, but.
They didn't need a public hearing, so.
They didn't need a public hearing. Their changes were not hugely significant, so, but I haven't heard of anyone that wants to be on that meeting.
Okay.
So probably not.
Okay. I'm not gonna hold my breath. I was just wondering.
I think it's on my birthday, so.
Ooh. All right, um.
Excuse your absence.
Yeah, you have to.
Does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Bye.
Close. Motion is adjourned at eight oh four.
I'm gonna go work on my motion.
Yeah, it's like.